First name is Zahn Chen.
Welcome, sir. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for the invitation. We're afternoon honorary council members. My name is John Chen and I served in the U.S. Navy with Commander C. Chen. And one of the patriot and accident leader that he was, he gave up his 17 years to serve the U.S. Navy and put his life on line for this country. And he postponed his life plan. And now he's coming back to serve not just the U.S. Navy Reserve, but also the community. And yet, his property has been being put on eminent domain. And I just would like to ask every one of you to reconsider the decision because of, I think he deserved better than that. And he and his family need a place to stay. And his kids need to have a decent home to grow as well. Thank you very much for your attentions.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Nico Chan.
You can either side works, that one or that one.
Okay, can you come on up here? Thank you. Okay, hold on to here. Go ahead, you can talk. This is Nico Chan. Nico, where do you live? You live in this house, right? Yes, okay. Who do you live with?
Daddy and mommy and baby and mama.
And what else do you need to say?
Nothing.
Okay. This is your home. We live here. Thank you.
Next on the list is Elaine Chan.
Thank you for coming. You did a great job up there.
I want everybody to look at my husband. Look at the uniform that he's wearing. He has served this country for 19 years and still serving. If you don't respect us, just because we're little, some little Chinese people, at least you'll respect the uniform. Because during the pandemic, I'm a first responder. And my husbandship mercy was sent to help this country, this city, and to help this county. But it's taking my property the way you repaid us. There is no reason for the temporary easement to be placed on my house. Put the easement on King County's property. It's a vacant land right next door to me. While King County is pouring millions of dollars into programs to address the homeless crisis, your vote would actively create another homeless family, us. Look at my son. He's not even one year old. And the Seattle winter is coming. There's electric lines running on my property. There's water meter. There is a water septic system here. Now, is King County giving us a permanent living arrangement for my young family? The Metro Company doesn't care. What do they know about the real property? And you want us to abandon our home for $9,600? Is that your just compensation? Because there is no way in today's real estate market you can find a property at $220,000. This is on a $22 per square foot appraisal. So approving this means you, councilmen, along with King County Metro, have committed violating law of the state law of RCW 84.4.030. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next on the list is C. Chan.
My name is C. Chan. Not C. Chen. Council members, Up the Grove, Dunn, Von Reitbar, Zahale, Dombowski, Perry, Balducci, Barron, Masqueta, and Executive Constantine. We all know that King County has a very shameful history of systemic racism. As a fifth-generation Chinese-American, my family knows this very well. Now you're condemning the home of a marginalized people and victimized family again. Does King County want, under your leadership, another shameful legacy? I'm asking you, begging you, do the right and legal thing. Delay this ordinance to meet with us so that you can learn the true story. Vote no. Otherwise, I promise you, if you refuse to meet with us and pass this ordinance, all of your neighbors in all of your districts will know regularly what kind of racist monsters you are. And this promise I can deliver from Naval Air Station Whitby Island to Joint Base Lewis McCord, to Fairchild Air Force Base, and to every union hall and shop steward of my union brothers and sisters, of which I've been a union member for over 10 years. If you vote to continue generational trauma, if you abuse and traumatize my girls, my community, I swear on my life, if you vote to take our home, if you turn your back on all these communities that struggle so hard just to pay the bills so that you can sit there comfortably, you will be made to regret it. So delay your decision. Just sit down with us, hear the truth, free of misinformation. Up the Grove, you're campaigning for state land commissioner.
That was, that was.
Is this what you want Washington families to expect?
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
Next on the list is Elona Kearney.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for allowing us this space to speak. My name is Elona Kearney. I am a veteran. And I'm here in support of Chan and his family, in support of someone who is serving in the military. And one thing I would like to bring to your attention is how military families are impacted. We move around a lot. Our kids don't get that stability. So when we find homes to make our homes for our kids to grow up and have the stability that they need, we don't want to snatch those things away from them. They're already traumatized by those things. Right now is a deployment season where Chan will be being deployed soon. So, you know, number one, that is against, you know, what is it? The Service Member Civil Rights Act, where, you know, service members aren't protected under those things. So that's not fair to his family to leave his wife with two small kids to figure out where they're gonna go, as one thing. And another thing is with the amount of money that tends to get offered, you also have to consider that even if you were to give us the amount to just pay off the amount of our home, we don't have the, have what it takes. You don't even know if we have the credit score to even be able to get into another home. So, you know, we're serving our country to protect the inalienable rights of, you know, the people in our country to be able to have life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Own a home is one of them. So if we're sacrificing our lives for this and it's being taken away, then what are we really fighting for? What are we really standing for? Why would anyone want to go into the service if this is what it's being taken with? If they don't have a home to come back to? Or you're gonna say, oh, you might as well start renting because they can't afford to get into another place? So I'm asking that you reconsider your position. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Next on the list is Kong LeFol.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our serviceman, Mr. Chan. There's a few things that, points that I'd like to make on eminent domain. Overcoming property seizure through eminent domain is challenging but yet possible, particularly if the property owner can mount a strong legal defense. There are several ways a private citizen can fight against eminent domain. Challenge the public use requirement. One of the most ways to fight eminent domain is to challenge whether the property, proposed use of the property truly qualifies as public use. Although courts have broadly interpreted public use to include economic development, some state laws may provide narrow definitions. Property owners can argue that property, that the project primarily benefits private interests rather than public and therefore doesn't justify the use of eminent domain. Point number two, questions of necessity of the seizure. The property owner may challenge whether the seizure is necessary for the project. If the government can achieve its goals without taking property, suggestion like the lot next to their land, the owner can argue that their property should not be taken. Point three, prove bad faith or improper procedure. The government must follow legal procedures when exercising eminent domain. If they fought, if they fail to do so, the property owner can file a lawsuit to stop the delay of the taking. Owners can look for signs of bad faith, such as hidden motivations behind the land seizure or collusion with private developers. 4.4, negotiate for better compensation. While stopping the eminent domain process entirely can be difficult, property owners often have more success in challenging the amount of compensation offered. In many cases, the government may initialize offers that may not truly reflect the value of the property. Please consider going to the table, renegotiating something better for Mr. Chan, and honor the uniform that he wears. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Gary Lee.
I am Gary Lee, and I am a former city planner. I just retired in April. I've been a planner for over 30 years in the city of Redmond. And I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. C. Chan. I request that you not condemn this property right now because that existing bus stop location is not the best location for a bus stop, especially for long-term improvement for a bus stop. What I sent you was an email that I got from a friend of mine, who's a civil engineer, who reached out to some transportation engineers to look at this bus stop location. And they say that that bus stop, the existing bus stop, is the worst location of the three options for bus stops. The best option is the mid-block location, which would be the property right next to Mr. C. Chan, just on the north. The very next property. That would be a mid-block location. The next best one would be on the further intersections called the near side. No, far side, which would be further south. So of the three options for bus stop locations, the existing bus stop, which they are, which you are looking at condemning for that purpose, will be the worst location for the future and now. In being that you're gonna be improving it for the next 20 years, it'll be improvement for the worst location. So why don't you do the right thing? If you haven't already, consult with an expert. If you haven't, if they haven't already testified to you that this is the worst, best, or whatever location, do that before you make this decision. They'll tell you that it's not the best location. So that's what I'm asking you. At least delay this decision until you get that information for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Next on the list is Justin Carlson.
Oh, good afternoon, Chair and esteemed colleagues here. Congratulations, Latinx community, for their proclamation today. I think that's a great thing. Here we have an individual that represents three communities: Asian-American community, military community, and family community. I think you might want to perhaps consider, Wash, may I humbly suggest that you consider delaying this vote for two weeks so you can better appreciate the situation. You have new facts, information in front of you, which need to be considered prior to your vote. And Lieutenant Commander Chen, U.S. Navy, was out serving our country and did, made a best good-faith effort to inform the county of what he was doing to try to inform you of this. So he worked at the Ombudsman. He worked with other organizations, thinking that he was doing the proper policy and procedure in order to inform this body of the information that you needed to have prior to making this vote. So again, I would humbly suggest that you table this for two weeks to appreciate the situation, get more information, and to honor the military community, honor the Asian community, and families here in Washington. I could go on, but I think that's enough. You have much information in front of you that I think needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Last name on the list is Jean Showman.
Honorary council members, members of the audience. My name is Jean Showman, a Vietnam vet, and 32 years in law enforcement. Retired as a sergeant. C. Chan is my neighbor. And you can see, he's got three little kids. I'm sure he would not have purchased that property had he known that the county was gonna come in and try to take a big chunk of his property, which includes, he's got a septic system that they would be digging into, the utilities that would be interrupted for the rest of the neighborhood. He's been a real good neighbor. And I hate to see his yard cut in half just for eminent domain. County has property five feet from his property line that's standing vacant. Why they don't use that is beyond me. And all I can say is I hope, I hope that the county reconsideres locating that bus stop somewhere else. I know that since that bus stop was included there, which is just a metal sign right now, the garbage it piles up almost every day has to be cleaned up, otherwise it looks really badly. And I know that there's other neighbors that would have been here, but they just couldn't leave the jobs and things like that to speak in front of you folks. And I just wanted to say I hope that this thing gets reconsidered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Is there anyone else in person before we move to online who is here for public comment? Okay, let's move to online.
First name online is Howard Greenwich.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Howard Greenwich, the research director at Peget Sound Sage. I start with a quick shout-out to El Centro, which built one of the first EDI-type projects on Beacon Hill in Seattle and is a shining example for other communities across the county. Before you today is a motion to accept the executive's transmittal on a King County EDI. As some of you know, this is four years in the making of hard work by many BIPOC-led community leaders. This includes nearly two years of program vision and design work with equally hard-working county staff. The fundamental goal of an EDI program is to help communities lead development and not just be bystanders of gentrification. It's a strategy, a strategy to preserve whole neighborhoods for communities that have been segregated or displaced over generations. It adds key pieces that let communities thrive that just affordable housing cannot provide. The three core principles of EDI are: one, getting land permanently out of speculation; two, building capacity of communities to lead development; and three, collective governance. These are the same principles that drive other land conservation strategies that we know are effective. I urge you to adopt the motion to launch the King County EDI and allow staff to start giving capacity grants to the communities rating of student land.
No one? Okay. Seeing no further requests, we will close the public hearing and move on to the first item on our agenda, which is item number seven, Proposed Substitute Ordinance Number 2024-0226.2, An Ordinance Authorizing the Condemnation of Real Property to Obtain Easements and Other Rights in Property for the Construction of the Rapid Ride I Line in the city of Renton. Councilmember Dunn to move the item?
I'll move it at form, and then we can talk about whether the timing is right. I'll move Proposed Substance Ordinance 2024-0226.
All right. Do you want staff to brief the item first, or how would you like them to perform?
Yeah, I think maybe, let's, let's get all the information out. I'd suggest staff, and then we can talk about the ordinance specifically and timing of it.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Please proceed whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm Mary Bergen. I'm from the council staff. And I'll note that we also do have staff from Metro on the Zoom call if you'd like more specific information. So I will note that the item before you is, as Councilmember Dunn noted, related to the development of the Rapid Ride I Line. As you may recall, back in 2020, the council adopted what's called a locally preferred alternative for the I Line that identified not only the pathway the bus would follow, but the station locations. One of those station locations is the property being described. What is proposed is--
We do not allow outbursts in the chambers during briefings. Thank you.
What is proposed is an approximately 114 square feet of property along the sidewalk at this location for a bus station, which is a requirement of the federal funding that this project has been awarded, as well as an approximately 1,400-square-foot temporary construction easement until the end of 2026. Metro staff are online and can speak more to the process that they have followed with the property owners. I will note that the city of Renton has requested a mid-block safety crossing just north of the bus stop, which Metro has concluded made this location the only possible location for that particular bus stop. So with that, I will conclude. I will note that there is an amendment to be offered today to provide additional clarification on what is and is not subject to this ordinance.
Can you, what do you mean by that in terms of what's in that amendment? What does that mean exactly?
So what the amendment does is it specifically references the property summary that was submitted along with the ordinance. And that provides, both in words and in diagrams, the areas that the executive is proposing for the acquisition. So again, approximately 114 square feet along the sidewalk, and then an approximately 1,400-square-foot temporary construction easement.
Will the House be condemned?
The House will not be condemned.
Just for the record, Mary, I'll ask a clarifying question. We heard multiple people in public comment speaking about a specific house and wanting us to avoid condemnation. Is that house that was referenced in public comment part of the amendment that you're describing?
So the amendment would clarify that the intended condemnation would not affect the house.
Okay, thank you.
And again, there are Metro staff online if you'd like to hear more details about the work that they have done or the proposed acquisition.
Okay. We will go there in a moment. But first, Councilmember Dombowski, did you want to say something?
Well, just, yeah, I really appreciated the testimony today. What I want folks to know who may be new here to council is we heard this in committee, and it got members' attention, particularly Councilmember Barone, who had read the ordinance in detail and conveyed to the rest of us that this was a residential property. And he did some work along with our office to draft this amendment. We did not, we got our attention. We did not want anybody's home condemned. And that is the amendment that Councilmember Barone, and I think I'm on as a cosponsor, would be offering today. We worked with staff. We also followed up, just for members' benefit, with Metro. We were concerned, we didn't know if there was a language barrier issue. We wanted to understand what communications had occurred between our department. And for folks following along, this is kind of really new to the council. We don't see these until they get here. And we got some information on the communications that folks didn't think there was that. I have heard some potentially new information today, and that is related to, and I went and kind of looked online, the septic issue. I didn't know that this is on septic. And that, to me, is important with respect to a temporary construction easement and a taking not only for the existing septic drain field, but for our required reserve. We require that property have a backup area. Councilmember Dunn and Perry know this well, given their districts. But if your line fails, we want you to have a backup area. And whether that soil is disturbed can matter, right, for perk tests? I would, this is a long way to say it. I think we need at least, we have a processor for a week's courtesy delay. But I think that's warranted here to maybe dig in and understand a little bit better.
So I will note, Councilmember Dombowski, that the septic area has been investigated by Metro, and there are Metro staff on the line if you'd want to hear more.
That's really good that they're here. But this is not gonna allow me, in this real time, enough opportunity to kind of have a dialogue with them, and I think maybe other members. But I think, you know, we, for me personally, I would like some offline time to engage further. And I also want to encourage Metro staff to engage on this. And while I've got the mic, if you will, there's some, I want to understand from Metro why these other locations that have been suggested here, materials presented today, don't work. I understand there's a request from the city of Renton for a mid-block crossing, but it looks like there's an unopened right-of-way, which I think would be to the north of this. They've, a little bit here, recommended a new bus stop at mid-block. I think that's probably the county property that was referenced in testimony. You can just tell from here, and then there's a, so I just would like the opportunity to get a little more information. This is not my district, but I would be reluctant to vote yes on condemning this property, given the information before me today.
I've heard a request for a courtesy delay from Councilmember Dombowski. Mary, could you speak on what the implications of a courtesy delay would be on the timing of this decision?
Metro has indicated that they are planning to begin construction early next year. And this ordinance would authorize them to move forward toward acquisition through the eminent domain process. So they are hoping for action as quickly as possible. They have just alerted me, just in summary, that they have done extensive research and found that the septic is not in the location of the acquisition and would not be affected. But again, they have just indicated that a one-week delay would be acceptable.
Okay. So, Councilmember Barone.
Chair, so I don't, I don't have any objections to the one-week delay. Just wanted to add about the amendment, just to make sure as people are reviewing this. Because I, as Councilmember Dombowski noted, this is something that's new. It's my first time on this council with a condemnation. And so the language on the amendment is trying to, if you, if you look at the actual language of the ordinance, it actually authorizes, I understand that was not the intent, but it technically, legally, authorizes the county to take over the entire parcel. And so the intent of the amendment is to narrow that down. Now, I was trying to be very careful because I understand that Metro may have to make some small changes, potentially. And in negotiation with the property owner, we wanted to allow flexibility for that. And so the language that we have in the amendment is substantially, you know, substantially to what was proposed. But it's intended to make clear that the home would not be condemned. And so that's, as you consider this, as folks consider that over the next week, I just want to make sure that that was the intent of the language. Obviously, open to suggestions on the language. But that's what, we worked with staff to make sure that we gave, you know, balanced out flexibility for Metro, but also making it very clear that we were only allowing condemnation of that portion of the property that was necessary for the, for the project.
Thank you. Unless I hear objections, I'm gonna honor the courtesy delay and not put this forward for a vote today. Councilmember Balducci.
I'm not objecting to the courtesy delay, but I would like to have an opportunity to ask a question before we move on.
Absolutely. We will not move on from this item. I just wanted to say that we won't be voting on it just for the, for our people who came in to give public comment today. This is very serious business. We felt your heart and the anger and the passion. It's your home. Of course, we understand that. And I think every single person up here is going to do as every amount of due diligence that is humanly possible to get this right. as every amount of due diligence that is humanly possible to get this right. So thank you all for being here, and we won't vote on it today, but we will continue to ask questions. Councilmember Valducci?
Thank you, Councilmember Zahalay. I would like to ask, repeat, somewhat repeat questions, but like to ask for Metro to have an opportunity to say something, because this is our public meeting, and I think it's important for them to be able to speak to the questions on the record as we're asking them. So what I heard the questions as are impact to, like, what is the overall impact of this property with this temporary and permanent easement? I'd like to hear them speak to what they know about the septic system and the impacts to the home, whether and why not consider other locations for this bus stop, and what efforts they have made to engage in conversation with the homeowners, because it is not infrequent that government projects, if you think about all the infrastructure that we built, pipes and roads and transit lines and wastewater treatment plants and solid waste facilities, all of the infrastructure that's required for a county of our size and density, it is not at all unusual for us to need to engage in property acquisition. The vast majority of property acquisition is done voluntarily, with the government purchasing at a fair market price the property that's needed. I want to say the majority of acquisitions are partial. There's takings of a sliver of a property as opposed to a whole property, but anytime we impact somebody's residence, it's important that we understand that we've done everything we can to avoid it. So I would love to give Metro the opportunity to speak to those questions and anything else they might like to add here this morning, afternoon. Sorry. Thanks.
Great. Well, good afternoon, and for the record, Mark Ellerbrook, I'm the Capitol Division Director for King County Metro. Thanks very much for having us here today. First, I want to thank Lieutenant Commander Chan for your service and for coming to the meeting today. This is obviously, as folks have said, a very serious matter. Anytime the government considers taking property, it's not a light matter and something that we take very seriously, Metro. I think to a few different points. One, I think one of our major objectives has been and is here today is to have an opportunity to meet with the Chan family and talk about Metro's plans and the impacts on their real property. We've talked about, and I think Mary and others have talked about, the specific components. There's 114 square feet about, a permanent taking. It's about 45 feet by two feet or two and a half feet wide for the permanent stop. And then there's obviously a temporary easement, which is around 1,400 square feet for the construction. And so we'll be on the site on the property for a temporary period of time, build the station, and then we will come off that property. So that's the impact on the property. As Mary alluded to, we have investigated the impact on the septic system. We have not had complete access or been able to engage with the Chan family, although we have reached out to them on multiple occasions, to go onto the site and actually ensure and guarantee the impacts on things like septic and other utilities, but we would very much like to do so. And so, again, really want to reiterate the hope to meet with the Chan family and be able to discuss the project and the impacts. A few different additional follow-up questions that you had, Councilmember Valducci. Why this location as opposed to other locations? There's a few different reasons for that. Going back to sort of the overall Rapid Ride concept or Bus Rapid Transit concept, there are an expectation from the Federal Transit Administration about how frequent there are stops, and those things are done in pairs to kind of balance the amount of access to transit. So there is a stop needed in this general area per the overall plan for the Bus Rapid Transit and what the FTA's expectations are for that. When we look to investigate the particular location, we actually did look to a site further to the north, but both Washington Department of Transportation and the city of Renton objected to that location because of safety concerns, and so then directed us to this mid-block crossing, as Mary referenced, which puts it at the location that we are at now. And so that's how we ended up in the space that we are looking for from a safety perspective for pedestrians. And so we were obviously able to provide more context around that to council members or to the Chan family to discuss it. And I think ultimately, at the end of the day, one of our takeaways from this meeting and the committee hearing that we had a few weeks ago, and I think prior conversations, is an opportunity to meet with the Chans. And if we do have the one-week courtesy delay, we certainly would love to try to use that to be that opportunity to engage with the family.
Mark, could you just say in layman terms to what extent Metro will be taking over, quote-unquote, "the entire parcel"? It sounded like Councilmember Barone's interpretation was you would take ownership of the entire parcel, but now there's an amendment narrowing the scope. What would actually be happening from Metro's perspective?
Yeah, thank you for that. And actually, I really appreciate the amendment. The original ordinance as drafted provided a level of flexibility, because again, Metro hasn't been able to go on the property to specifically state whether it's 140 square feet or 120 square feet or however much that would be for the permanent taking. So the ordinance itself and the amendment restricts that and clearly states that Metro or King County will not be using any power of eminent domain to impact the residents and will restrict it to only the amount that we need for the purposes of constructing the bus stop.
So I think what I'm understanding is there isn't a specific geography right now, and that's something to be determined later, once you're on-site and make an assessment. Is that right?
I mean, there is a specific geography, obviously. It is right along the frontage with the main thoroughfare there, and that will be where we place the bus, or the station stop for the Rapid Transit. There is space behind that, so I think that would be to the west where the easement for construction would be, and then we would exit from that piece of property. But the house is kind of further up the property line from there. We would not be impacting it.
I'm not following, Mark, and I'm not on the committee that this went through, so this is my first time seeing this topic, and so I'll do my homework in the one-week courtesy delay. But if there's any way to just explain a little bit more clearly how far into this residential property we are talking about, if at all, I don't feel like I'm getting a clear understanding of that.
Sure. So I will try, and then I can actually have our project manager, Janine Robinson, also participate. But if you can imagine, you know, the main road there is a north-south road, and--
This is, is this 108th Avenue that you're talking about?
I believe that is correct.
Okay.
And then there, for us to be able to build the stop, we basically need to go two feet in from the public property line into the private property and have it be about 40, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes, about 45 feet long. So imagine a strip, two feet deep by 45 feet long, to construct the permanent location for the bus station stop. So that, you know, essentially, it's a long, narrow strip of currently private property owned by the Chan family that we would permanently take as part of the condemnation to build the station stop.
Okay, thank you. That's more clear.
I'm also happy to have Janine join as well, if that's more helpful.
Sure. Thank you. Janine, are you there?
I am. Once I started sharing my screen, I couldn't find the mute button. So this is an aerial view of the Chan property here, and we wanted to prepare this in a way that is very visual and helps to show where the acquisition would be for the station. And so the area that is red hashed is the area of the fee acquisition. And the bus stop, you can see some of the, it's hard to see what's here, but you can see some of the callouts. This is the bus shelter here, a bench, another bench, a light, and some landscaping. So this is the two-foot acquisition. This would become City of Renton right-of-way. Metro or King County do not retain ownership of that. It becomes part of the city right-of-way. The larger orange hashed area is the temporary construction easement, and because the property has a bit of a slope, we want to make sure that when they exit their driveway, because we're adjusting the width of the sidewalk at the roadway, that there's no issues with exiting the driveway. And that's why the temporary construction easement is quite large, so that we can ensure that they have a good slope on the driveway. We would also be providing new fencing, completely new fencing around the whole front of the property and the side, and any landscaping as well. Part of the property is fenced around at the corner of 186th and 108th. Here, there is fencing that encloses public right-of-way here, and so that is something that would then, the fence would come across this straight line where the actual public right-of-way already exists today.
Thank you. Colleagues? Councilmember Barone?
Well, Chair, I just see that some of the community members may be wanting to look at this information. I don't think this is included in today's packet, but--
This was included in the packet, and it was briefed at committee with this map.
Okay. I knew it was in the BFM. I wasn't sure if it was in our packet.
And it should be in your packets today.
Thank you. Definitely is on the BFM packet, because that's where I saw it first, so thank you.
Councilmember Muscata?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to the Chair of Transportation for suggesting the one-week delay. Again, thanks to my colleague, Councilmember Barone, who really was raising these issues in committee. I think that prompted a handful of questions, including the questions that you heard from Councilmember Valducci. I wanted to add to some of those questions, two specifically. Thanks to the community members for providing this map as well. This is a chance for us to see where the original recommended new bus stop be, at least from some of the community members' perspectives. So as we heard in public testimony, the recommended space just slightly to the north, it was presented from Metro staff, that it was slightly to the north that they looked. I want to know specifically what the analysis was of the area that's between the two houses just to the north there. So I think that's what was in reference when they mentioned that just five feet to the north of the suggested property, there's a potential location. So that would be helpful to look at. And also, I really do think that it would be helpful for us to hear more detail, as you've noted, Chair, what the follow-up conversation is. It does seem like folks have noted the lack of communication on our end. We should, you know, own that, and it sounds like we have in this meeting as well, but really to hear what the follow-up conversations are. So I appreciate that there's additional discussion to be had. Obviously, we know that there are times that there will be the need for eminent domain, as Councilmember Valducci noted, and I agree with that, but it does seem like there's been both a lack of communication and, not for folks maybe trying, but lack of communication for sure, and we need to resolve that and better understand how this option that's outlined in the chart that was handed to us, that is located between two homes, is fully analyzed and see what the options exist there. So I'd like to add those to the list of questions that Councilmember Valducci noted as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Dombowski?
Thank you very much. Mr. Ellerbrook, thanks for being here. In public testimony, we heard reference to the family had reached out to the, I think, the Ombuds Office. Did the department receive any communication or work with our Ombuds Office on this project?
We did hear, yes, we did connect with the Ombuds and have the follow-up in that space as well. So I think we worked, we tried to get through, communication through the Ombuds Office as well to the Chan family, and I think if impact or the outcome of this meeting is that we have an opportunity to meet with the Chans, I think that's an excellent outcome.
And I appreciate that. I did hear from Metro that you guys wanted to have further conversations. It sounds like as well that there could have been some delay due to potential deployment or assignment to base. Colleagues, I'm going to suggest, I think Metro wants to work in good faith here. We have a family that's engaged. I'm going to move that we remand this ordinance to the Budget and Fiscal Management Committee rather than a one-week courtesy delay. I don't believe that one week's going to be enough. I don't, I don't think that there's going to be a delay on the project. We can bring this up if we can't, if they can't get it resolved, but I don't think it's fair to put a one-week fuse on this. They're going to need a little more time. I believe that folks are going to work in good faith to see if they can get our questions answered and get it resolved. But I think the better course is to remand this to the Budget and Fiscal Management Committee and let Metro take another run at this.
Councilmember Valducci?
I'd like to hear from Metro if there's any impact on the project based on further weeks of delay that that would entail. Can I just say, I hear, I hear the desire of the council members to make sure that every stone has been unturned, that we are, if we take a vote on this one way or the other, you can vote no, by the way, if you, that we are giving strong enough direction to minimize impacts. I'm also hearing that the department has reached out to the family. In the papers, we got multiple times and not received a response. And so I think it's important that we keep this project moving forward and not delay a Rapid Ride implementation that is going to serve tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people, because we're having a struggle with this one location. I think we should give direction for them to Metro to follow up again after today. We have everybody's attention now, family, their friends, supporters, the department, the council members, we have everybody's attention. So before we leave here today, perhaps we could get Metro and the family to schedule this discussion, so they can have the conversation that they need to have. And I heard Metro say that they need permission to measure the property to see how bad the impacts will be. If they have not been given that permission, they'll never be able to give us that information until we give them the authority to go forward. So I would love to hear from Metro what the ramifications of a multiple-week delay would be as opposed to just a single week of further work. Thank you.
Mark?
I'm actually going to defer that to Janine, who has more of the details on the actual project and the submittals to FTA.
The impact of a multiple-week delay is, I mean, we actually expect that there are multiple weeks ahead of negotiation with the Chans, once we do get a chance to have conversations and direct conversations. I want to note that we do, in this scale of a project, this is a 170-plus million-dollar project with $80 million coming from the Federal Transit Administration, there is expectation from Federal Transit Administration that a project sponsor of a project this scale, receiving this funding, is able to implement the significant investments of the federal dollars. Obviously, we want to do that very carefully, and what moving into condemnation allows is the conversations to happen. So, so far, we haven't had luck with the conversations, and that's really why we're here. And that's, we try to negotiate with property owners directly and voluntarily and amicably, and that's generally how most properties are going so far on this project. We do have over 100 properties that are necessary for Rapid Ride I-line, and so this may not be the only one that we come to you with. I just wanted to mention that. And so it's really just part of the process. We don't, yeah, the negotiations would still continue. I didn't answer that directly. So a few weeks delay is an impact to the project. We're trying to get the project out to bid later this year or early January, which means property and permits and everything to be in place.
And colleagues, I will just remind us that we're in budget stand-down, so the Committee of Jurisdiction-- So the Committee of Jurisdiction will not be meeting at least until late November, probably early December. This could be brought forward into Committee of the Whole Meeting, which are now being convened every two weeks. We have a pretty full meeting scheduled for the next one. So it would be, I want to say, three weeks before we could bring this forward into committee. And I don't yet have a sense of how full those committee meetings are going to be for legislation that has not yet been through committee. So I, I want to suggest, okay, let me suggest a, let me suggest a compromise, Councilmember Dombowski. And the compromise would be, we've already agreed to a one-week courtesy delay to allow the department to try to answer the questions that members have raised today and make additional, now that everybody has heard the request in these chambers between the, between the parties, for them to talk. Hopefully, the family will agree to talk, and Metro will agree to talk, and that discussion will happen, and, and we'll have a little bit of additional progress in terms of sharing information and the ability to measure and all the things that need to happen. If we, and then we'll come back next week. And if, if next week, we're still not satisfied, we can refer it back to committee then. We won't have lost any time in referring back to committee because this is not going to get on a committee meeting for at least three weeks. So I would suggest that we go with the one-week courtesy delay. Try to, try to address this next week. And if we are unable to do so, we always have the, the delay lever in our collective hands by sending back to committee if we choose to delay further.
Thank you, Councilmember Valducci. Before I address that, Councilmember Dunn, I think, wants to add something.
Yeah, okay, just a couple of things. Thanks. This is why we have legislative process. This is why we have public testimony. It's really important that we hear from the people who are affected. Condemnation is allowed by the Constitution, both the state and federal. And, and I think everyone up here takes that, that really seriously. Okay? So especially when it potentially impacts somebody's home, okay? So you're getting the full attention of this council and, I think, thoughtful discussion and deliberation. I certainly will not support anything that will condemn your home. We obviously know this isn't meant for prime time. I, I, I think the best way to handle it, I think Councilmember Valducci raised it, is that we delay today. It's clearly not ready for prime time. We get some work done on it this week. There's certainly some additional things I'd like to understand. And then next week, if we still don't have some resolution, then maybe it's appropriate to, as Mr. Dombowski mentioned, re-refer back to committee. But that, that is kind of where I'm coming from. And then we can better handle that. I think that's a compromise. Not everybody will like it. The other thing we could do is, the other thing we can do is, is do another week's delay next week when we get here. And then the other thing, I hate to say this, but also, Metro, just for the future, when you're dealing with a condemnation action in a legislative process, you need to be here at the council in person, okay? It's too important. The emotion that you felt from the testimony here today is because their home, they believe their home is going to be taken from them. Everybody's got to play the legislative part here, okay? So we hear you, we work with you. We're not going to take any action today. And I think we can find a solution. I believe there's enough room here for a solution that everyone will come away satisfied. I think there is that place. So I would urge and support a week's delay. And in fact, I'm willing to withdraw the motion if the Chair wants me to, or we can simply delay. Please do withdraw the motion. Okay, I'm only, I only moved this thing because I'm the vice chair here today, but, but I'll, I'll withdraw the underlying motion, and then we can remove it at the appropriate time.
Thank you. We will take a one-week courtesy delay, and we do expect that several questions will be answered before next week. We expect that Metro will be, have a physical presence at Vol Council next week. And I'm hoping that there will be a, a meeting between the Chan family and Metro in, in that time. Mark, is there a plan for connecting with this family who's here in the chambers right now?
Yes, we'll reach back out to, to the family and connect.
Okay.
I'm also happy to get, if there's a better contact information than what we've been using, I'm happy to co, try to collect that.
Chan family, if you could leave your contact info with the clerks right here. We will make sure that Mark and Metro have that. Thank you so much for being here. All right. We're going to move on to the next item. Mary, thank you so much for that presentation. Item eight, Proposed Ordinance Number 2024-0295, An Ordinance Approving and Adopting the Memorandum of Agreement Negotiated By and Between King County and the Teamsters Local Union Number 174, Representing Station Operator Truck Driver Utility--